I'd like to call the November 3rd Stanley County Board of Education meeting to order, and welcome you all here tonight. And at this time, I will recognize Ms. Glenda Gibson for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we come to you this evening with hearts of gratitude for all of the good gifts and blessings that you have given to us and to our school system. We are so thankful, Lord, for every single employee, every student, and all of our families that are a part of Stanley County Schools. We lift up to you, Lord, a very special student, Ms. Morgan Udi. Please continue to heal her body and provide grace and comfort to her parents during this time of rehabilitation for Morgan. Dear God, this evening, we have a new superintendent at the helm of Stanley County Schools, Dr. Jared Dennis. We are thankful for him, and pray that you will shower Dr. Dennis and his family with your blessings beyond measure. Guide our hearts and our minds during our meeting this evening to make wise decisions that are for the good of all. All of this we ask in your name. Amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the high of the United States of America, and to the good government, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next, I would like to recognize our new superintendent, Dr. Jared Dennis, for some recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. First, I would like to call up Mr. Lynn Plummer, and we would like to recognize the Beginning Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, members of the board. We were lucky to close out the 2019-2020 school year being able to recognize our district Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and Bus Driver of the Year. Shortly after we recognized those people on the last day of school, I received an email from NCAP, North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, about participating in a process for a Beginning Teacher of the Year. So this ended up being a little later than our others. So with the help of Tierney Fairchild, who helps us with Beginning Teacher Support for the district, we put together a process to invite our Beginning Teachers to submit a portfolio to be recognized as our Beginning Teacher of the Year. Our Beginning Teacher of the Year for the 2019-2020 school year had this to say about her philosophy of teaching. My personal teaching philosophy is to never give up on my students, no matter what. I want my students to know they can achieve anything. I want all of my students to feel like they belong, no matter what their race, background, or culture is. I truly believe all students are capable of being successful in their own way. It's my job as a teacher to give them that safe, nurturing, and engaging environment where they will be excited to learn. I want to be the teacher that my students remember in 20 years as the teacher that cared and would do anything for her students, or as I call them, my kids. Joining us tonight, we do have East Albemarle Elementary School's principal, Dr. Eric Johnson, to congratulate our third-grade teacher at East Albemarle Elementary School, Ms. Wendy Joffson, as Stanley County Schools' 2019-2020 Beginning Teacher of the Year. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Joffson.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, that's a great achievement. Next, I would like to call up Mrs. Susan Brooks, and she is going to recognize National Title I Distinguished Schools.
Good evening. Recently, we were notified by DPI that concerning recognition of two of our Title I schools to be eligible to submit portfolios for the National Title I Distinguished Schools Program. The National Association of State Title I Directors and the United States Department of Ed sponsors the Title I Distinguished School Recognition Program annually. The program recognizes exemplary Title I schools that hold students to high standards and demonstrate exemplary school effectiveness in the following areas: teaching and learning based on the approved state curriculum, use of research-based instructional strategies, opportunities provided for all students to achieve, established partnerships with families, parents, and the community, and the implementing of sustained research-based professional development. North Carolina will select two schools to represent the state at the national level in two categories. One school will be selected for high progress, and one school will be selected for excellence in specialty populations. The Excellence in Special Populations category includes programs and services aligned with meeting the needs of special populations of students, including homeless, English-language learners, and students with disabilities. To be eligible, special populations of students in this category must show growth over two or more consecutive years, and the school must show significant progress in closing the gap for students in subgroups. This year, Baden Elementary and Locust Elementary both met requirements for consideration for the National Title I Distinguished Schools Award in the areas of specialty populations. Both schools submitted a portfolio today to North Carolina Department of Instruction to be eligible for this competition. So it's a great honor for our district to have our two schools considered for this award, and we would like to recognize their accomplishments in this area. So tonight, we have Mr. Rhodes and Shelley Udi with us from Baden, and we have Lynn Carpenter, the Crickham coach at Locust, along with Devon Fur. So we'd like to recognize them for this honor.
Congratulations again to both schools. I've worked in districts before, and it's rare for them to have one Title I Distinguished School, and for Stanley County Schools to have two Title I Distinguished Schools, that's quite an achievement, and it shows a lot to the work those schools have put in and their faculty and staff. I would like to call up two individuals right now if I could. I would like to call up Mr. Ryan McIntyre and Ms. Patty Crump, please. So what I have is, we have a certificate of recognition, and how it reads is, "In preparation for your service and dedication toward providing a quality education for the children at Stanley County Schools." And again, this is for Ms. Patty Crump and Mr. Ryan McIntyre. And I do want to say, I wish that I had more time to get to know you guys better, but I do know, and based on speaking with everyone, that you guys worked tirelessly to ensure that the students of Stanley County had what they needed and what they deserved in education. It's a hard job, it's a thankless job, and we appreciate everything you've done, and it's just a small token of our appreciation. I also do want to say that Mr. Melvin Poole could not be here tonight. I do want to recognize him as well, and he has been here for 22 years. With, I know it was a short break, but he was born in Montgomery County to a family of 10 kids, graduated from East Montgomery High School, attended Emmanuel and UNC Charlotte, where he studied political science. He is a US Army veteran, again, served for 22 years on the board, beginning in 1998 after the merger, and he was elected chairman seven times and vice chair five. And we do have a token for Mr. Poole that will get him at a later date. So again, thank you, and thank you for everything you've done for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. In your packet, you have minutes from the October 6th board meeting, as well as the October 10th emergency call board meeting. If you'll just review that for any corrections. If none of the minutes was stand approved. Next item is committee reports. First up is instructional program. Ms. Patty Crump.
October the 19th, at 6:00 PM, we had a virtual committee meeting, and Vicky Watson, Glenda Gibson, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, Hope Miller-Drye, and Vicky Calvert were all present for that. We discussed quite a few things. So I'll start at the top. You can follow along with me. The very first item on our agenda was the graduation date. We are going with the graduation for May the 29th, and at that time, committee members, we were not sure about the location because there was a conflict on May the 29th, that Saturday. Fortunately, there was a dance recital planned there, and they learned about our dilemma, and they have changed their date, and they've allowed for us to use that building that day. So we're very, very grateful. I do not know who they are, but we are very grateful for that. So, May the 29th, Aggressivik Center. The second thing on the agenda is the instructional support resources. I'm going to read along for transparency. Dr. Blake Lewis provided updated information concerning lightbox purchases that were targeted for middle and high schools, stating several schools made minimal or no purchases due to lack of teacher interest. Lightbox would be a curriculum instruction material. She noted, "Jumpstart funding will be used to purchase lightbox resources for all elementary schools," expressing that "due to the cost of Newzella and Achieve 3000, Dr. Blake Lewis researched additional options." She informed the committee that "due to being under a current contract with Edmentum, they have offered a one-year pilot program for unit recovery and flex assignments of digital courses. Also, a pilot program of unit recovery will allow teachers within the district to create a mini-credit recovery module free for the remainder of the year. Dr. Mitchell and Mandy Mills will be working with teachers to design the modules." She then detailed concerns and data regarding the exceptional children population and the need to invest in instructional programs. If approved, Dr. Blake Lewis will work with Dr. Holland to invest CARES funding to purchase the Extreme Reading Program and coordinate mandatory teacher training. On a motion by Glenda Gibson, the committee approved the purchase of Extreme Reading Program materials and teacher training. So this Extreme Reading Program sounds very promising. We were all very excited to hear about it when she brought this to our attention. It targets children with special needs and those also who are not on grade level. And there will be extensive training for the teachers who will be implementing this. The CARES Act money is there, we just need approval, and it looks like it's going to be just under $50,000. If you'll look with me in your packet, there's the Extreme Reading Preparation Think Sheet, front and back of that, and then the next couple of pages outlines the costs. Yeah, we need a recommendation to approve, and then we could discuss if you want, to approve the purchase of this with the CARES Act funding.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee to approve the purchase of the Extreme Reading Program materials and teacher training as outlined in the information provided to the board.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? I would just like to ask, is the, so I'm assuming the 49 is the final figure, correct?
I do have an updated cost for you that is slightly less. We have the official quote that came from the vendor, and it is slightly less. It comes in at $48,400 is the updated amount.
And with the continuation of this, is that price logged in for a certain amount of time?
It is not a computer-based program. It is a face-to-face deliverable program. So once our teachers are trained and classroom sets of these products are purchased, that is something that will remain in-house and be used over and over again. There is a consumable component to this for students, and that's a small amount that would be incurred every year. I'm looking to see if I know exactly what that amount is. Classroom, 15 binders. It looks like it's rolled into the classroom set price, but it is, it's a very small amount. It's kind of like a journal notebook that the students keep.
Anyone else? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There is another item that we discussed. So, the date to review the school improvement plans. So every year, you know, we come together and we review those school improvement plans. There was not a whole lot of changes that were made this year due to the fact that last year was cut short, and then we did not have testing to compare, you know, how we did grow and meet those goals. So most of the goals are pretty much the same. I emailed those to everybody. I believe I got those from Dr. Blake Lewis on October the 23rd and forwarded them on to everyone else. So hopefully, you've had a chance to look at those. I know we all looked at them very critically last year. But we, there were a few changes, and those changes would be, let's see, my hands were right on it. Safety measures. So if you'll see this paper, you can see the two little highlighted areas. So the safety plans, obviously, we now have COVID as something that we need to look at, and so, and then some other issues with safety plans. And also, if you'll look below, all school administration were asked to look at each of these and make any specific updates that they needed. So it's really more of a formality to pass these on as the administration believes that these are sufficient plans, and we had approved them last year. So we just need a motion to approve these.
Chairman, make a motion to approve these changes.
Second.
Motion in the second. Call the board?
Aye.
Stand's approved. Anything else? Next, facilities. Mr. Anthony Graves.
Sure. A quick update. Last meeting, we had the Facilities Committee on October 6th. Mr. Bowers, our Director of Facilities, presented information and documentation of two potential wireless communication tower sites for long-term lease that would be co-located on the West Stanley High School premises or grounds, and we were unable to connect to the individual from the company that was engaging the school system to ask any additional questions. So we tabled the motion, and we did have a meeting earlier tonight, and we had not scheduled that. We had not had time to talk about rescheduling that with Mr. Bowers. So we will do that for the next Facilities Committee prior to the next meeting. That's the plan, and that is the only update I have at this time.
Next, finance. Mr. Jeff Chance.
Mr. Chairman, the board took action on the financial means recommendation at our October 6th regular meeting concerning the YMCA partnership, and that information, I believe you all already have.
There's no change to that, and you give approval to that.
Just one comment. Also, this will act as our EAP program for employees.
Personnel. Ms. Vicky Watts.
No report.
Policy. Ms. Patty Crump.
No report.
Legislative Resource Network. Dr. Dennis.
No report.
Okay. Ms. Gibson.
No report.
Next on the agenda is curriculum and instruction. Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
I only have one item for you this evening. In your packet, you will see a list of candidates for early graduation. These are students who have completed their high school requirements for graduation as of the end of this semester and would like to go ahead and be approved for early graduation. So I do need action on this item.
Motion to approve?
I move we approve these students for early graduation.
Motion in the second. All in favor? Or any discussion? Sorry. All right. Hearing none. I'm pretty sure that was unanimous, but any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next, personnel. Ms. Vicky Calvert.
An updated personnel agenda was at your spot this evening. Additions were made in red. Section 1 requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
I move we approve Section 2.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Next, auxiliary services. Mr. Terry Dudley.
I don't have anything to report for that.
All right. Next, we have public comments, but we have no one that has signed up, so I will move to superintendent comments.
Thank you. Just to make the board aware of a few things, our volleyball and cross-country practice will begin tomorrow on the 4th, and the county, we'll actually start competition in both of those on the 16th. I do want to make the board aware of something, and I am trying to gain extra information on this. If you're not aware, the High School Athletic Association has limited, if we do actually have contest, to 100 participants in an outdoor event and 25 participants in an indoor event. And as we know, that's going to, we're going to have a significant loss in revenue for athletics, especially if that does not change. Some of the numbers I'm getting together, and again, I have more concrete numbers for you, it's going to be a significant loss, and it's going to be conversations we're going to have to have moving forward about how athletics is funded and what it's going to look like. Because if I just look at transportation, for instance, that's going to be a significant, the significant loss of revenue will not, they won't even be able to pay for transportation to the schools. And I think we all understand that, and we all know that, and you know, things can change moving forward, but as of right now, predicated on what the Athletic Association says, we're going to have to have some discussions on the loss of revenue to our teams, to our schools. And this, I'm mainly talking at the high school level at this juncture. Right now, we do not have a plan for athletics at the middle school level. To my knowledge, we haven't heard back from Montgomery County Schools, and so we're talking about some different, what some different kind of things could look like at the middle school level to see if we could get the kids in some type of athletic activity. We are going to send surveys on the students who want to come back next semester to face-to-face. Those will go to the principals on Friday, and will subsequently go out to the parents, and this is for the remote students. They'll go through the schools, and that is to gauge what students want to come back face-to-face. We are also going to make sure that everyone understands that there are going to be, or can be, teacher reassignments, or you know, we're having to move teachers around based on what those numbers look like. So that'll, that'll be coming out on Friday. There was a, the Department of Health and Human Services had a webinar and clarified some things that I want to make the board aware of if they weren't. As far, right now, they're using the 15-minute cumulative in 24 hours, less than six feet, masking doesn't matter, as being in contact if someone has COVID. So that is the recommendation from the Department of Health and Human Services at this time, the most recent. With child nutrition, the free meal waiver has been extended for the remainder of the school year. The class-size waiver has been made available. Mr. Bush is compiling the numbers now. This waiver is due at the end of the month for the K3 class-size requirements, and there may be some opportunities to where we may go over and have to use that waiver, but he is still in the midst of compiling those numbers now. November 8th is National Parent Teacher Day, and I will be going to the schools this week and next, to meet with all the principals. I've been able to go to several already. I've really liked the things I've seen. The principals have been very accommodating. The teachers, I can tell they're working hard, and a lot of hard work's gone in. And Ms. Gibson, you said it earlier, prayers for Morgan Udi, 9th grader at West Stanley High School, was in the golf cart accident, and the good news was she has been moved from ICU to the Children's Hospital for therapy. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. The first, well, let me work backwards here. You just mentioned something about the classroom sizes, the mandatory maximum classroom size, where we might need to obtain a waiver. Were these the recommended changes? Well, let me, let me back up. Are these new numbers?
The numbers coming from the state are not new. They have not changed those numbers. So it's still the 18 and 21, and so if we go over those numbers, we have to.
Okay, so the changes are still frozen, the ones that were recommended.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The second question is, when you mentioned the Department of Health and Human Services, was that the state?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
What's the state?
And then last, do we have any idea, maybe Mr. Dudley might have to respond to this, maybe he can nod his head, I don't know. Do we have any idea if the General Assembly has even broached the subject of athletics funding, or busing, or transportation?
Nothing has come down from my area of financing DPI, anything from the General Assembly.
Do we have any, is, is there an agenda? Is there a way that we can monitor what activities are being discussed at the General Assembly with respect to funding? I mean, I'm assuming finance with respect to the schools. Is there a location that we can monitor? I haven't been able to find one.
On the DPI website, under District Support, you will find the Finance and Business Services website. Anything relating to finance and business that comes down through the General Assembly, they will post up there for that purpose. But most of the time, it's something that's already acted on from the General Assembly.
Okay. For the benefit of the people that may be watching online and didn't hear, there is a subsection of the DPI website where information that's been acted upon by the General Assembly is available for review, but we don't necessarily know if there's one information that they're going to take up, the topics are going to take.
The General Assembly, just like we do, they do post their agendas ahead of time. So if anything pertaining to athletics and finance were to be discussed, it will be on that agenda, and I do not have the website on hand, but they do make those available.
Okay. I'm just curious, but thank you both for that. Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move to board member comments. Mr. Anthony Graves.
Thank you, Chairman. We were joking earlier that Ryan only had to wait three years, 11 months, and 30 days and eight hours to become chairman, so congratulations on that. I do want to say, first of all, I want to congratulate Ms., I believe it's, is it Joffson? Ms. Joffson, who was recognized for the Beginning Teacher of the Year?
Jofflin.
Jofflin. Okay. I wanted to make sure I got her name pronounced right. So congratulations. So congratulations to her, that's great. And you know, it's just a reminder, while we're dealing with all these things with COVID, all of these, the regular activities of the school system continue, so that's great. And, and those recognitions are very important because people's work doesn't stop, and so the recognition shouldn't stop either. That was great, and congratulations to Baden and Locust Elementary Schools for their well-deserved recognition. And, and I'm sure that we probably have many schools that were super close to also receiving that recognition as well. And I did want to mention, I wanted to congratulate Chairman Melvin Poole, who couldn't be here tonight, as our new superintendent mentioned earlier, who's under the weather. We, you know, hope for a speedy recovery for him. And I wanted to recognize him and his, his 22 years of service as a board member. It's incredibly challenging for those that have been on the board quite a bit of time. Ms. Vicky Watson and Mr. Jeff Chance, they know especially how 22 years as a board member is quite a bit of time, because even in times of, of not that much controversy, it's still tough. It's still, it's a tough job, and not just, not only Mr. Poole, but his family as well as wife, you know, everybody is involved when you volunteer for a role like this. So, so I just wanted to congratulate him. I got involved, I started paying attention to the school system years ago when Mr. Poole was a board member, and we were looking at the school finances because there was this controversy around, school closures popped up. And I remember meeting with him many, many times and getting information about the budget, and I was, I was glad that I was able to at least spend two years with him here on the board. His, the dedication and commitment that he's had to the school system is, is without question. So I also wanted to very quickly recognize Ryan McIntyre and Ms. Patty Crump, who, people hear this, there's so much time and effort that goes into reviewing the documentation and correspondence, not only from the central office and the superintendent and all of the staff and faculty of the schools, but also teachers, parents, family members, as well as caregivers of students within the system as well. You get communication from everyone. And as a vice chairman and a chairman, you spend a little bit extra time, a little bit more than everyone else, because you have to be a little bit more involved with the central office. So I wanted to thank him for his time, and as well as Ms. Patty Crump, who was, was, I believe instrumental in helping educate the community about a lot of things that were happening inside of the school system that people didn't really have visibility into. The way she was able to articulate it and advocate on behalf of the school system was impressive to watch, as well as her ability to maintain her composure during times of controversy, especially online, served as a model, role model for me. I can't say that, that I'm not gonna call you for assistance in that in the future, but I did want to recognize you guys, thank you so much, as well as everyone else. Again, there's so many things been going on in the school system just since our last meeting that we've had. I just wanted to continue to thank the faculty and staff for doing such an incredible job and welcoming our new superintendent. And Mr. Dennis, congratulations and welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patty Crump.
Ms. Wendy Jofflin, I hope I said your name correctly. Congratulations. That is quite an honor for your first, your beginning year to be honored in that way. I would say keep doing what you're doing, because it's the best, the very best of all out there. So thank you for your commitment to Stanley County Schools. And Baden and Locust Elementary Schools, thank you for doing what you needed to do in meeting growth and the, the things to be eligible for this award. I look forward to seeing that in the future and see, you know, how, how you progress in the contest. Dr. Dennis, I sure hate that I'm not gonna have the opportunity to work with you more than this next month, but I will certainly be a cheerleader in the community, and I'll continue to advocate. And, and you know, give me a call anytime, and I will help support you in any way that I can, as well as the, the other board members. I will say that when I came on into this position, it was, we all know it was very divisive about four years ago. It was tough coming on, but we, we felt like we had a victory in saving our community schools. And I look at our record over the last four years, and wow, we have, we have weathered some big time storms, don't you agree? The last four years have been tremendous, in my opinion, as far as things coming at you. But I will say that if I've learned anything, I've learned in many things, but I think my favorite lesson is the fact that I came on here very judgmental, I think, about maybe how elected officials worked, and how things might be working in the central office. And experience, you know, definitely educates you. And being here in the closed doors, or working alongside these wonderful people, you know, we may disagree, and we have disagreed very heatedly, I'll tell you that. But when we come out of the doors together, we're pretty much a united front, and I think that's important. I have tremendous amount of respect for every one of you. For different reasons, I walk away with six new friends, and I look forward to watching what y'all do over the next four years, and the new people that are coming on. There's gonna be some, some great talent and very intelligent people that are coming on. So I thank the southern part of Stanley County for giving me an opportunity to represent you. I hope I did you well, and see you later.
Does see you later mean you're coming back again?
I might, but I can't say that around my family quite yet.
Well, I certainly thank all of you that are always here from the county office and our principals, our, our teachers that, that may be present. That just makes, that, it always makes me feel good to see your support and for you to know that I support you. So thank you for all that you do. Welcome, Dr. Jared Dennis. I look forward to, to working with you, and I know that you are a true blessing to our school system. I also want to thank Vicky Calvert, who served in that interim position, and in the toughest of times, I mean, wow. But yet, every time she always displayed grace, had a smile on her face, she was always, no matter if I needed to speak with her, or I'm sure any other board member, she was there and listened and stated to us what was happening. So I truly, I truly appreciate you. Job well done. Thank you. Our beginning Teacher of the Year, Ms. Wendy Jofflin, congratulations to you. It's wonderful. For our two schools with Title I, Distinguished Schools, Baden and Locust, I know you have wonderful staff, and I also know that there's two great leaders in Mr. Damon Rhodes and Mr. Devron Fur. So thank you so much for all that you do, and that is very deserving. For, I also want to thank the public for one thing. I want the public to know, I, I know that it has been hard for the public, for our parents, for our students, and when we closed our schools, that our numbers were high with COVID, and it had really presented a problem with staffing. But now our numbers are down, and Mr. Jeff Chance and I, I think, recently had a conversation about this. Our numbers are down tremendously, and I, I have to applaud the public for that. I have to applaud our, our families for this, and I hope that it will, will continue, because your safety and your health is very, very important to us. Mr. Poole is not here. Certainly, I have enjoyed serving with him. Ryan and Patty, you are here. Thank you for your, for your time and your dedication in serving the students of Stanley County Schools. I know that, Ms. Crump said this, there have been times that, that we have disagreed, but I think we've had more times of being in agreement than in disagreement. And I learned, as Ms. Crump said, you're not judgmental of people. You, you just, you see the facts, and you're, you're able to form opinions, and you work together on the good. You want the outcome that's good. I know one thing about Ms. Patty Crump, she is a champion for teachers, and she will be missed, because every teacher wants that champion. They want that advocate, and she will be missed, but I'm gonna be there advocating for them, Ms. Crump. And I appreciate, I appreciate you, and thank you, Ryan.
Welcome, Dr. Dennis. Look forward to working with you. Appreciate your sincere attention to all that you're taking on already on behalf of the district and what we know is yet to come, and certainly you're gonna do an excellent job.
Thank you.
You come well recommended with State Department officials, so we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Vicky, thank you also for your willingness to step into the interim position. You did a great job. You kept us all informed, you kept us up to date on things. I'm sorry, take this off. And you were very much available when we needed you, and that's very much appreciated. I'll also congratulate Ms. Jofflin as well. That is an outstanding award, in my opinion, as a first-year teacher. And her philosophy towards student success, I think, is excellent. My congratulations also to Devron and Damon and your staffs for your recognition, that's awesome. We see that good things are indeed happening in Stanley County Schools, and we anticipate greater things yet to come. Ryan, Patty, what can I say? Thank you so much for your time, your effort. I've enjoyed our time working with each other, and again, as has been said, we may have disagreed, but push comes shove, in the end, the right thing got done, and that's what I appreciate much. I appreciate your dedication and your willingness to serve. And like I said about Melvin, gosh knows, Melvin and I probably go back about as far as you and Melvin go back, Ms. Watson. Melvin and I have had some very vehement disagreements, and we've had some pretty good ideas at the same time that all came out in the end to make some good things happen. So cannot thank him enough for his dedicated years of service to Stanley County Schools. Kind of piggybacking off of something Ms. Gibson just said, thanks to everyone who took our two weeks of remote learning to heart. We realize how difficult it was from all standpoints, I think, certainly as parents and as grandparents even, as I was helping my grandchildren with some of their remote learning, as was my wife. Thank goodness, she's a retired teacher. She has a bigger knack for that in some respects than I do. So thank you. Our numbers are indeed down. As I'd said before, I, I keep up with it fairly closely, and Stanley County is, is now at or below the state average for percent positive cases, and that shows that in a two-week period of time, what can happen when things are taken seriously concerning the safety and health and well-being of our, our students and staff and, and families. So again, I appreciate very much your efforts toward, toward helping with that. And with that.
Ms. Watson.
Well, I would like to also congratulate Ms. Jofflin for her first-year Teacher Award. That, to me, is something that's wonderful. I liked her philosophy. She's there for those students, and they're gonna be rewarded with her as their, their teacher. Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Fur, you're heroes to get your kids where they're supposed to be, and I thank you for that. Ms. Calvert? I thank you for all that you've done for us. It's like everybody said, you were there. All we had to do was call, and you always were there for us, so I thank you for that. Patty, and Ryan, and Melvin, I thank you for all your sincere dedication to our students. You've done a wonderful job, and I appreciate that. And I do hope that Mr. Poole will, his help will be speedy recovery for him. And one other thing, I don't know if you all saw this, but Mr. Gene McIntyre, which was a teacher and a principal for us for years, the commissioners dedicated, I suppose, this, is it this meeting hall? And it's Gene McIntyre Meeting Hall, and I think that's so appropriate for such a wonderful man that he was. Just a very good man, loved our children, loved our children. And I, I think that's just a good thing for the commissioners to do. And with that, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. It's gonna be here before we know it, and then Christmas. So have a good Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Lastly, I just want to echo what my fellow board members have said, a congratulations to everyone that was recognized tonight. Also, continued prayers for Ms. Udi, Ms. Morgan Udi. And also, just ask you all to lift up the family of Randy Oliver in your prayers. As you know, he passed away this week, and Randy, he coached me growing up in baseball, and he's coached no talent, how many kids in Stanley County? And he passed that along to his sons, Randy and Timmy, and they're doing the same thing. So while they may not be directly involved in the schools, they're taking our students and, you know, coaching them, you know, teaching them the right ways to do things, and I appreciate them. And Stanley County definitely has lost a great man. To my fellow board members, I appreciate the time spent with you guys, serving with you all, irritating you all, letting y'all all irritate me some. So I mean, it's, it's definitely been a eventful four years, for sure. Open schools, having controversy, winding up on the Daily Mail in the UK, COVID, I mean, I don't, I think we probably set a record for four years of things that could happen. So I, I know my wife will not miss me being a board member at all. She's been counting down the days, but I'm very grateful for the time here, but I'm very excited to be able to spend some more time with her. And I do want to read something from Mr. Poole. He sent me an email and asked me just to read this to everyone. "To my fellow board members, I regret that I am unable to be with you tonight. I'm a battle, I'm battling a case of dehydration. I want to wish the best for our new superintendent." I want to wish the best for our new superintendent and the incoming board. I would like to express my appreciation to all of our employees for dealing with the most trying times. I encourage the new board to not micromanage the superintendent, but to work as a team to achieve great things for Stanley County Schools. I would like to thank the current board for their years of service. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your chair for the board for the last four years. And finally, a heartfelt thanks to the great citizens that allowed me to serve them 22 years. God bless you all. So with that, I will just take a moment to say that, man, Melvin just straight up gets dragged through the mud sometimes. I mean, you know, we think national politics are bad, but locally, I mean, Melvin's been drugged about as much as you can be drugged and still have your skin on. It's been rough for him. And I'm telling you, it, he can't do it for the money because, trust me, the check's not big enough to cover the stress or the gas or anything else. And, you know, he, he definitely doesn't do it for the power because, you know, really, I mean, you're, you're one member of a seven person board, you don't have a whole lot of power. There's only one reason he doesn't and that's because he cares about each and every student of Stanley County. Especially to deal with 22 years plus of, you know, just, you know, being slandered, lied about. I mean, everything you can imagine, the man's dealt with it. And he, he does it because he loves the kids of Stanley County. And I don't think that his dedication to Stanley County schools could be understated by all. I mean, he is, he's been a great leader for our board. That's why he's been chairman for four years. And we definitely appreciate him guiding us, keeping us on track at all times. And it's funny, most people think Melvin is the hothead. But honestly, many times he's a level head when some other folks, I mean, you know, I myself may be upset and call him and he will sit there and listen to you just rant. And then after it all, he's like, it's going to be all right. Just, just take a deep breath, you know? And I mean, he, he does provide that level head that I, I think most of the community don't get to see. And so I will say Stanley County is definitely going to miss a good one. But I guess Red Cross is gaining the good one since he's unopposed tonight. Yeah, but again, I appreciate serving with you all. I appreciate my wife dealing with four years of stress and newspaper articles and Facebook and everything else. So again, just thank everyone, thank the public for electing me and trusting me to have this position for the last four years. So with that, we will go on. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, here in the Commons Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. And next, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session under the appropriate statutes for personnel matters, student matters, and attorney client matters.
I may be able to go into closed session?
One second.